All right, it's seven o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Town of Spring Hope Board of Commissioners meeting for January 3rd, 2022 is called to order. And we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all please stand and face the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, setting of the agenda. Commissioners in front of you have the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do any of you need to add anything? Item three, consent of agenda. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, which will also include the approval of the December 6th, 2021, meeting minutes as written.
Make a motion we approve the agenda and the minutes as written unless there's a correction needs to be made by someone else on board.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda and minutes have passed. Informal discussion and public comment. So the first item on tonight's agenda is actually something new that's been established here in town, and it's several committees of people that wanna get engaged and get involved and help the town move forward. So the commissioners have a lot of weight on their shoulders, and so there's a lot of people that have set up to the plate that want to help the commissioners, and we're very appreciative of that. So I'm gonna just jump right in, and we're gonna start by introducing the Board of Advisors. So we have the Advisory Board, which will work directly with the mayor, and which I can bring their concerns and their ideas back to the Board of Commissioners. And then they each have committees, with several committee members on those, serving on those. So we'll start off with the mayor's office advisory board member for the Communications Committee, Ms. Liz Daniels. And Liz currently works in the luxury private aviation industry and has for seventeen years. She serves at her company Sales and Marketing Managing Director since 2016. Her expertise in communicating and serving clients' needs to create a seamless and impeccable luxury traveling experience. Ms. Liz is a native of Pilot, North Carolina, and neighbor in Franklin County, and she's also currently serving as the Social Media Manager for the Franklin County Sheriff Campaign. Liz has been married to her husband Derek for twenty years, has two sons and a daughter. Liz and her family moved to Spring Hope in 2019, and just like all of you, she's very excited about serving and helping the town move forward. So Ms. Liz Daniels, if you'll please stand, and I'm gonna pass the floor over to her.
Hello. I'm just gonna read the Advisory Board mission statement. We will selflessly serve as stewards and ambassadors of the community with humility, integrity, inclusion, and truthfulness. We will lead by example. It is our mission to make sure all residents' voices are heard, to serve as the link between the people and the town, and to cultivate new ideas and solutions. As advisors, we strive to be deeply involved in the community, willing to help, support, and be a resource of knowledge and mentorship. Organize a roadmap and multi-year plan to build a stronger and more inclusive community. As visionaries, we will dream big and imagine new levels of success while always looking forward to the future. Always stay motivated to improve the town. Set goals and follow up regularly to make sure progress never stops. To get started, some of our initial goals are: Develop plans to repair on our infrastructure and improve our water quality. Develop marketing plans and ordinance packets for developers and business owners to attract them to Spring Hope. Introduce and suggest legislation to address issues holding Spring Hope back from prospering. The Advisory Board slogan is Preserve the past, renew the present, and embrace the future. I will now introduce the Chief Development Advisor, Kay Mitchell. Mrs. Mitchell has been in the real estate industry for over twenty years and is the broker in charge at Stone Auction and Realty. She has very deep reeks in the community and has been involved with real estate transactions within every aspect of development and growth, including land, commercial, and residential. This has allowed her to build relationships with developers, business owners, builders, realtors, financiers, and more. Mrs. Mitchell knows a great deal of Spring Hope's history and heritage, so she is well positioned to make sure Spring Hope doesn't lose its identity as it grows. She is extremely vested in the success of Spring Hope and sees the amazing potential to take Spring Hope to new levels of success for all residents and business owners. And I will now turn the floor over to her.
I just spoke to Ms. Kay, but I never saw her come in. There she is. The floor is yours.
My goal for our committee is to serve as a link between those people who are interested, those people who wanna live and/or do business in Spring Hope, hopefully both, and those people in a position to assist with that transition and to make that transition as pleasant as possible. Do I introduce the members of my committee now?
You sure can, if you'd like.
Okay.
I'm gonna introduce them all at the end, but if you wanna introduce them now, that's fine. It's up to you.
I'll be quick. Have a representative from the chamber, Clarice Viset, the realtors, Jason Walters, Bill Brantley, Jason Hemmlewhite, Joseph Og, and hopefully the new town manager. Thank you.
And who is next, Ms. Kay?
Oh, you want me to... Okay, then, I get to introduce the Chair of our Community and Quality of Life Committee. That is Cynthia Crummel. Cynthia is the newly-elected pastor of Clifton Chapel Church. She's a high school graduate of Beddenville High School, class of eighty-four. She has an Associate's Degree in Applied Science Funeral Services from Bedford Community College. She's a graduate of Goldsboro Disciple Institute with a Bachelor of Theology degree. She serves as an instructor with Quest Theological Seminary in Wade, North Carolina. She serves on the Family Food Basket Ministry in S.I.M. Is married to Frank Crummel Jr. for twenty-nine years, has one daughter, son-in-law, and four grandchildren. She's gifted in many areas, hospitality, community missions. She demonstrates a spirit of excellence, respect, and love for people. They are key elements of her character. I've been very impressed with her enthusiasm. Welcome to the Advisory Board, Cynthia.
Let me see it. Thank you, Ms. Kay. As part of being on the Advisory Board, our committee, who is a committee that's full of very zealous people, and I will ask them to stand if they are all here, all those that are on my committee. We have talked and we have texted, and I wanna say that I haven't really met them personally, but through our texts, we have bonded. So I thank you all in advance. This team is a team that will bring the community together. We're going to empower the community to come together, having services and different things in the community that will help the community to grow. We definitely want to reach out to a lot of those that have been, you know, not really getting involved in a lot of the community things that's been going on, so we're gonna try to restructure all of that to bring the whole community together. Also, as a part of that, because we all know that we want to be in love and we want to be in fellowship, so that's one of the main things of this community Advisory Board, is to bring everyone together, and we're gonna have fun doing it. Right? And it was all about having fun doing it. So it's not gonna be something that's gonna be work, 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 but we're gonna have fun doing it. And with that being said, I'm going to introduce our Travel and Tourism Advisor. As you very well know, this is Ms. Leeann, who owns two other businesses in Spring Hope. I gotta take this mask off. I was breathing. Okay. So she owns two businesses right here in Spring Hope. One is the One or Two West Nash Antiques, and of course, One Man's Treasure Auction House. That's the one I'm familiar with. She is a part of the Chamber of Commerce. She serves in a very exemplary capacity because she has a business right here in Spring Hope. That says a lot about who she is. She loves Spring Hope enough to have not one business, but two businesses. She hails from North Carolina State University, class of 2008. She has very...a lot of ideas, and she is going to be the one that you need to go to when you have visitors that is passing through Spring Hope. She's also gonna be here to help with the residents, to build a stronger relationship, even in tourism and in travel. I introduce to you Ms. Leeann Hennett.
Well, thank you. I appreciate these kind of words. I don't know what I can say to follow up to that. This committee, it's really exciting for me to be on this committee and to chair the committee. We have so many hidden gems here in Spring Hope and the area around Spring Hope that I didn't even know about until I got into this Travel and Tourism position. There are lots of wedding venues here, antique shops, agritourism. So we are looking forward to getting together and creating some marketing and some advertising activities and events, and working with our other committees to make that happen. Our next person is the Chief Infrastructure Advisor, Tony Jeffries. Tony worked over forty years in the heavy civil construction and infrastructure industry. He started out as a laborer, working in the roads, pipes, and bridge crews, and quickly worked his way into foreman and superintendent positions. In the past fifteen years, he became superintendent, a member of upper-level management, in charge of large infrastructure projects, including I-95, Greenway to Dulles Airport, the Pentagon, the White House Headquarters, 24244 interchange. He's recognized for his extreme efficiency with projects finishing on time and below cost. But I think this was the most important and my favorite part about his bio. He retired five years ago and married Delma Green Carter. He has four children and ten grandkids. He also started a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization fifteen years ago, Dusty Change Ministries, and has visited and served in Cuba over forty times, witnessing and sharing about Jesus Christ, his Lord and Savior. So we have Tony.
I'm just gonna say this, there's a few of the committee members, and I know Kyle's gonna point them out. I'm gonna say this more for the board than the committee and you people. I want the board to know that I know I'm a Commissioner, but I'm on this committee to solely keep and advise Kyle in what I feel is appropriate, and everything that I advise him will be...it's shared with you guys. This is not me trying to run the show, it's me just doing what I feel I've done for forty years, and I know what to do and how to do it maybe in a good way to be done. I will say this. Our committee, I can speak for our committee, because I've talked to all of them in the past about what they thought and what they feel. You know, one of our main objections, of course, is envirally. I know how they all feel about that, and I...our committee already has a beef with Kyle, and we will be discussing that in due time. So I want you guys to know that it's not all in favor. We're gonna tell them what we think.
That's how it should be. Thank you. And for all the other committees out there and committee members, this is a chance for you guys to really give your true opinions, your true feedback, and so it doesn't have to agree with what any of us think, it's about you. So keep that in mind, just like Tony said. So now I'm gonna quickly introduce the other committee members that are here. On the Infrastructure Committee, we've got Mr. James Leggett. We've got Darryl Emick, Gable Indio, and he is not here.
He's back there.
He did make it. There he is, he did. So you got out of Butner.
Yes, sir.
And Gable holds a tremendous amount of certifications and licenses and...
Not the Butner we...
No, not that, no. He was running in Butner today. He wasn't in Butner.
The chief's getting up, no.
Yeah. So he is very certified and licensed in infrastructure. Mr. Eric Gany and Mr. Town Manager might be sitting over there. Our Travel and Tourism, the chairperson, of course, Ms. Leanna Hennell. Mr. Stan Hennell, is he beside? There he is. And Joshua Strickland, I don't know if he made it. He's from Seven Pass Manor, and he said they had some COVID with the staff out, and I appreciate him not coming. We miss him, but I appreciate him not coming. Ms. Kathy Curtis, Mr. Michael Ward, Tracy Shealy, and Terry Griffin, they are with Peachtree. And let me mention what these people are with. Stan is with One Man's Treasure, Joshua Strickland, Seven Pass Manor, Kathy Curtis, Webb's Mill Wedding Venue, Michael Ward, Showside Grill and Bar. Tracy Shealy and Terry Griffin are Peachtree Country Club. Ann Drury is with Mays Forest. And Ms. Georgia Warren is with The Barnyard Agritourism. And Mr. George Barnner, I call him the Spring Hope Arts Council, he is the Artist Arts Center. And the Development Committee, Steve Brumfield, he is marketing. You have a Master's Degree in Marketing, is that right? And Town Manager may be a good fit for this one. Ms. Clarice Viset with the Chamber of Commerce. Bill Brantley, Realtor. Jason Walters, a Realtor. Joe Og is a new resident from up north. Erin and Deanna Gupta, both in business development. The community chaired by Ms. Cynthia Crummel. Daniel Taft is a local resident. Mr. Charles Watson, resident there is. Jonathan Jeffries and Ms. Peggy Leggett. Ms. Elsa Garcia with Elsa Salon. And Ms. Barbara Sullivan. And Robin Courtney...I don't wanna say that wrong, she has COVID. And Garrett Quinn. All right, so if all of you that are serving on one of these advisory committees, if you'll please stand so that I can think and recognize each of you, all the Advisory Board members and the committee members. Thank you all. So we look forward to the ideas that you guys bring to the table. I look forward to the help with the leadership and the guidance of the town, because it's all about you guys. So let's use these committees for what they're really for, which is to go out to the grassroots effort, go out to the community, listen to the people, get the feedback from the people, bring it back to the committees, back to the Advisory Board, so that we can bring it to the Board of Commissioners. So this is a way for us to...for all residents' voices to be heard. So thank you all, go back in the community, share what you heard, talk to your neighbors, and bring their feedback with you. And do any of the committee members wanna speak? I know a few of you said that you told me you wanted to speak, and then Ms. Georgia wanted to speak. Now is your time. Tell me why you, you know, joined a committee, or what do you see one of these committees accomplishing, or what value do you see in it?
I'll begin with you.
Okay.
Well, we've been very busy already with the Spring Hope Garden Club. I'm sure if I just heard that, it won't be here anymore. But I think that the quality of life here can be improved, and with Pastor Cynthia's leadership, I think we'll do a great job. And I'm very supportive of the Advisory Board, that does not replace the Town Council, but we are going to be the voice of the community. That's right.
I would like to say something, but, you know, running a business like Bar Yard, you know, outside of Spring Hope, and my biggest, I guess, concern was, probably my first year was, I had a lot of folks from outside, from Windale, from Raleigh, from Knightdale, and I had very little from Spring Hope. As a matter of fact, I would have people literally ride by and would stop after being open for three months and go, "How long you been here?" And the sign's like this big, you know, and, you know, it's just kinda concerning. So I guess for me, it's trying to tap in to what it is that we need to do to bring not just the local, but the outsiders. But I was very fortunate, the outsiders were eager to come and support, and several of them came back, you know, and it really was...I was grateful for that. But yeah, I would just like to be able to understand what the marketing aspect of it is, and possibly now that we got the Bojangles over here, and, you know, tap into that, hey, you can come over here and get some vegetables or whatever, you know, that sort of thing, but anyhow. But I'm just glad to be part of the committee, to be able to watch Spring Hope grow, because I'm sure it's gonna be a fast thing, but it does. But... Thank you.
Somebody else? Mr. Brumfield?
Small town. Those of you who have not visited the Arts Center, and I haven't seen your face, most of you, so I kinda echo what you said. Spring Hope is a rather unique little place. Nice town, beautiful town. I'm kind of a stranger here, so my name is George, last name Barnner. I am part owner with my wife, the Arts Center. How many of you know where the Arts Center is? A few. Good for you. How many have been? Not bad. Okay. So just echo what you said. Kyle kinda roped me in, came back to visit, and I've been on this team ever since. I will do what I can to help Spring Hope also grow, and to do whatever I can to bring more people into Spring Hope and help all of us from a commercial standpoint, that is, buy stuff. So I look forward to seeing all you guys in my place, especially you guys.
I think we might have time for one more person, if anybody else wants to speak. Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank you all, because you all really care, and that makes a big difference to anybody coming in. Anybody that's sitting here, they just know that this is the place to be. So God bless Spring Hope.
Thank you. All right, so thank you all for what you're doing. Make sure you go back out in the community and share what you've heard, what you're talking about and you're working on, and get the feedback from your neighbors, from your friends across town, and bring it back to the committees. And if you're here and you're not on a committee right now and you want to be on a committee, catch up with one of the chairpersons on your way out. And again, thank you all. I think some of you have dinner calling you or a favorite TV show. The rest of this meeting is not gonna be as entertaining, so you don't have to stay, you're welcome to stay, but we're gonna wrap up the presentation of the Advisory Board and the Mayor's committees at this time, so y'all are free to go. You can stay if you want. So thank you all again. Thank you so much. Safe travels, y'all. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. That's changed.
Changed.
Yep, that changed.
Okay.
Yep. All right, next item on the agenda, new business, consideration of employment agreement for new town manager, Mr. Andrew Deano. This agreement was modeled after the prior town manager, Jay Kim's contract. Town attorney and interim town manager negotiated the agreement, and we need a motion to approve this contract for the new town manager.
I'll make a motion we approve the contract for the new town manager.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion?
I need to insert the date that it starts. I didn't know...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, all right. So with that date inserted, okay. January twenty-four.
I amend my motion to include the date of January twenty-fourth as a start date.
Okay.
I got second.
Okay, second. Any discussions? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Deano, welcome to the town of Spring Hope.
Thank you.
So a few things about Mr. Andrew Deano. Am I saying that right?
It's Deano.
It's close enough.
Close enough.
Okay. Education, MPA, Public Administration, University of Rhode Island, so I guess that's gonna say where he's from. MCP for Community Planning, University of Rhode Island as well. Professional experience, right now he's working for the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments in Wilson, North Carolina. He is the Community Development Manager, providing forty-six member governments throughout Edge Carlton, Nash, Northampton, Halifax, and Wilson Counties with technical assistance, grant writing, and administration, as well as economic and community development services, providing local governments technical assistance on town administration management. What that means is now Spring Hope gets all of this time for economic development, grant writing, administration, and not spread between all the counties. Director of Community and Economic Development, Town of Bridgewater in Massachusetts. So again, we see, welcome down to...what's the weather like up there right now?
It's cold, and I think they just got over a nor'easter, so it's very unpleasant.
Very unpleasant. So it's pleasant here in Rhode Island. Also worked for the IRS, and Buffalo, New York, and city planner for Newport, Rhode Island. So a lot of experience in economic development, community development, administration, really helps keep municipalities on track. So we're looking forward to it. I think he's a perfect fit for what we need. I'm very excited. Would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pritchard, and I am very excited to be here and spending all my time, well, at least my professional time, with the town of Spring Hope. So I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you.
Next item, C, electronic gaming. I'm gonna let Commissioner Cohen take care of this item. If you wanna jump in and tell us what you got.
Sure. We passed...there's been a previous ordinance passed that's only allowed in light industrial, and we had an issue, what was it, Mark, a couple of months, a few months back, that some of the central and general business were starting to put in some machines, and apparently the industry is always finding a way to change what it's called. Anyway, we amended the ordinance to include some of the new names, I don't know what it'll be called next, but we did discover that there were some businesses in town that were installing the machines again, and I'm sure that you'll cover this in your report, but I think we've opened up five cases. So just to bring it to your attention, it is against town ordinance to be able to bring that in. Now, one thing that we do need to do as far as ordinance, and I don't see that here, and I guess it's part of the email that I sent, North Carolina General Statute 160A-285, so we're local police departments do have jurisdiction enforcing local ordinances when empowered and directed to do so by the local governing body. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we empower she again and his entire department to enforce those ordinances, whether it be for gaming, no parking zones, whatever it may be. If it's an ordinance, you can enforce it, and it's issued citations and we're directing you to do so. So I'll make that motion now.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Your responsibility. Thank you, Chief Kemp, for everything you do, and thank you, Commissioner Cohen. All right.
Michelle, thank you for all the information you gave us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, possible uses for the Americas Rescue Plan Act money. So this is money, these are funds that were...that came from America Rescue Plan Act basically for COVID and the hardships that were felt for employees. And so my recommendation, we have a sizable amount of funds, but my recommendation, I'll kick it off, this is something where the Board of Commissioners will put a final plan together, and then they'll vote on how they want to spend the money. But my recommendation is that we use the money for the town employees that have to actually interact and deal with COVID environment, so whether it be the office staff that were working with, you know, residents when they came in, or the police when they were pulling people over, making stops, or, you know, or interacting with the community. And so my recommendation, and then we also figure out how to budget this into a permanent budget for next year, is to give the police officers between four to six thousand dollars as a one-time payment, as well as town staff, and then figure out a way to put it into the budget for next year. And this is gonna be for them having to deal with the additional risk of COVID. And I'd like to pass it to Commissioner Jeffries. I know he...
Well, I just have another avenue. I agree with the police staff that deals with it, and our staff that's dealt with it all along. all along. I like to do, we have two nonprofits that are large in this community, and they're not us, but they are, they are us in essence. And I'd like to help both those, the Food Pantry, the Follers Love, and Spalding Resource Center. I think during this total time of COVID, they stayed open. They worked, they gave out food. So they had expenses that they had to do to buy masks, buy sanitizer, that was probably above and beyond, especially being two nonprofits. And I think it'd be wise for us to also help them through this. I mean, it's been going on for twenty months now, and I think we ought to at least, I think both of them, at least give them ten thousand dollars each. That's just my recommendation, to help them out, to thank them. And I know, you know, you may look at this, even Ms. Barnes approves of the Food Pantry because she got money for them to maybe buy the building. So we know she approves of these situations, and I think they're very, be very wise for us to do the same and help these nonprofits.
Michelle, would you like to make some comments on the ARCA funds?
The only comment I have is that if we do decide to use it for premium pay, there's a long checklist of things that we have to do, and each and every one of them has to be done before any money is given, and it's going to take a little while. I put an example of in other towns with policy what they did. No, that's from the Treasury. It's this American Rescue Plan fiscal recovery. That's from the, what county is it? Ocean?
Pittsburgh, Carolina.
Okay. I knew it was something down there. Anyway, something to maybe model ours after. It's going to take a while. We don't actually have to have the, money doesn't actually have to be allocated at least for another year. So, and we have to make sure we follow everything that U.S. Treasury says. If we don't, we'll have to pay it back.
So realistically, if we get to work on this, come up with a plan, do the checklist, realistically, how quick could we?
We do it quickly, I guess. It's just, we just have to do it carefully and make sure, like I said, all the i's are done and all the t's are crossed. It's going to be, it's going to take a minute.
Well, you guys have been dealing with COVID for a long time. I don't know if we get any reason to prolong the, you know?
I would make one comment, and that is, U.S. Treasury requires a local government to prioritize low and moderate income workers, when you're talking about, when you're talking about premium pay. So you can't just unilaterally hand out X amount of dollars if you do have to prioritize low and moderate income workers. And there'll be guidelines for that as the plans put together.
Could y'all create a plan and bring it before the board and get voted on?
I'm quite sure with Andy's help, we can.
Yeah, I would recommend that we explore other avenues, the lost revenue avenue to clear the money, put it into the budget, and then deal with it that way. And you can circumvent some of the red tape that way. So there are other avenues that we can explore, so be happy to do that.
Kyle, did you receive an email today, or the past couple of days, concerning the final rule for ARP?
I did.
So apparently there's some Zoom calls that are going to take, and it's going to help shine light on what we can and can't do.
Yeah, this came today, well, it came Friday for the final rule, and y'all can do the Zoom call.
The Zoom is obviously Friday, the twenty-first, at twelve, and I think, obviously, we got time, but you know. January twenty, there's several dates given here that that is available, and I think that'll help shine some light on what we can. I think we'll all agree, we would all love to be able to do those things with that money, obviously. There's no argument here, like to be more. But obviously, if we're going to be restricted by the government, we don't want to have to pay it on back end.
Exactly.
Obviously, you know, I understand we want to do this quick. This has been going on for Corona for two years, but at the same time, we're kind of at the pace of what we're allowed to do, so I don't want to overstep and get ourselves in trouble.
Yeah. And you don't have to reinvent the wheel even from what Andrew said.
So something, we'll wait until the twenty-fourth, or will we start working with you on it?
I'll be participating with my current employer anyway, so I can.
We'll be at home while we can do it, and that's good.
Okay. All right. That's good. So we'll move as quick as possible to put together a plan for the Board of Commissioners to vote on. That's good. Excellent. Item E, opposed amendment to the town's procurement policy dealing with the, not counting, town credit cards. So right now, the, it's obviously strict policy, you're dealing with government money, but the treasurer has one card and the town clerk, or tax administrator and the finance officer have the two cards right now, and the tax, she, Ms. Sandra, she purchases everything, right? And then do you purchase?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
But as the finance officer, I would give him the card because I'm the chief financial officer.
Right. So my, kind of what I was thinking is that right now, the police department, if they have to purchase a light, light bulb, or a headlight, or something, they need to be able to, you know, show up, come to work and be on duty, well, they're either going to be paying for it out of their personal pocket, you know, petty cash and that, having to get re-expensed or reimbursed, or they're going to have to get the card from Michelle, and if it's after hours, then they don't have access to the card. So what I was proposing here is that one of the cards from the administrative side be put in Chief Gant's name, and there's strict purchase order limits, so this wouldn't be no purchase going, just not purchased, purchase items over five hundred dollars. This would be when a police car.
It's one hundred dollars.
What's that?
It's one hundred dollars.
One hundred?
It's always been a hundred.
So this would be to purchase items that are essential for them to be able to show up and do their job. So right now, on the administrative side, we've got two cards, and they're both, you know, kind of in the offices right there together, one needed that they could get it from the other. So I would like to propose to the board that one of the cards be put in Chief Gant's name.
So where's the card now? Who has the card now?
Okay, I have a card in my office locked up. Sandra has a card locked up in her office.
But doesn't your card that you have, isn't that one given to the police department for them to utilize?
Yes. And the town manager also? He wasn't given a personal card, but he was allowed to use it. He could, of course, use the card. But that, that was all for fiscal control to, it was discovered that the more cards that go out, the more chance of misuse, whether it would be intentional or unintentional, and that was just, that's just a fiscal control thing, as well as a general statute thing that makes it so I have to do a pre-audit for every purchase, and so that also is a consideration. That's what, you know, what most towns do, and that's what Jay studied, and that's why it went into policy.
Can we let Chief Gant speak?
Maybe you could also address this before Chief speaks. This was in an email you sent. I don't remember the details. Everybody might not have seen that email. Remind me how many times you've had to write a check personally, reverse any of the officers for any expenses they've had. I remember, he was quite limited.
Okay. This year, once, and last year, I think, twice, and that was because they had alterations to their uniforms.
Right. So certainly I will, Chief Gant and the officers, to have whatever they need to have. If anything they need, I will have it.
I do too.
If you've not had an issue with the two cards, then it seems to me it might create a lot of oversight, more oversight for you to have to do, and it hasn't, doesn't seem like me wanting reimbursement in twelve months is that being an issue. Now, I'm overlooking some.
I, oh, I see both points. I see both points. I see Kyle's point for Officer Gant, and I see Michelle's point. I think no matter what we do, I think we need, if we do, this card does go to the chief, I think we need to have guidelines set up of what he does, when he does it, how it's written down, the receipts and all this stuff, how he's going to get that to Michelle on a regular basis, so she's up to snuff at all times of what's being spent. But I think there needs to be guidelines put in place, just not hand it to him and tell him, okay. I think we need to have something that there is guidelines for this, so we don't have issues down the road.
And to be clear, I was saying for Michelle's card to be renamed to Chief Gant, so we wouldn't increase the number of cards, it would still just be two cards. It wouldn't be an additional card, it would just be to rename her card to him.
So you wouldn't have a card?
Right. But don't you give Chief your card?
She doesn't do any purchasing. Sandra does the purchasing.
So I guess I'm not understanding then, if you give your card now, what difference does it make, whether it's in, I guess that's a question I have to ask Chief. Chief, have you ever had a problem utilizing the card in her name?
I have not, not for your business hours, ma'am.
Okay. And after, because the card would be in your possession specifically. So let's just say, sorry, Lenhart, I got to pick on you because you're there. So let's just say Lenhart does need a headlight or bulb, and it's nine o'clock. I mean, all the places are closed, Dillaway, so it would have to wait until the next day, right?
Or I would pay for it out of my.
But if you have the card.
Then I would pay for it over the phone.
Over the phone. That, but you would have to wait till the next business day since everything would be closed in a way, right?
No, I would pay for it over the phone from my house, because I would have a card with me.
No, I think what she's saying is that's actually business, because they get the headlight from it.
Yeah, like, so Advance Auto would be closed because they close at a certain time. So let's say his light went out at nine o'clock at night. So if his light went out at nine o'clock at night, you would have to wait until tomorrow to actually make that hurt to Dillaway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you been handling that so far with the after hour, with things like that?
Normally just pay for it out of my pocket and don't turn anything in.
And don't turn anything in?
No. Wow.
I mean, if it's five or ten bucks, it's not worth it to bring a receipt and have her cut it out. I mean, it's not that, you know, but I already have a card now. The card that I have now is tied to asset forfeiture, and that is from when I was on the task force. All that money that comes in from the drug seizures and asset forfeiture money, that's in my control now. But that is limited on what I can buy with that. I can't buy headlights and batteries and, or boots or anything like that on that card. Well, I could buy boots, but it's a little hippy. It's different on that, it's for training and police, exact police equipment and so on. Our other card that I have is for like the community events, the POW program, the, like when I did the concealed carry classes and stuff like that, that's where that money goes. So that, you know, most of that money in there is from grants and stuff like that or donations, so, you know, we're not going to take donated money, it's supposed to go back into the community and purchase stuff. So basically, all it would be for would just be, just a safe card to be able to buy something to have on that card and just turn the receipt into her the next day. I mean, it's not like something that's brand new. I spoke with Jay about this, and it was supposed to go to the board. I spoke with Mayor Waltney about it, and it was supposed to come to the board, and, you know, so on. I mean, this is something that's been going on for six or seven months now, it's not all of a sudden brand new. I've been asking for it from Mr. Gant.
What are some other examples of like when you would need to use the card? What you would have to, you had given me a few, but I can't remember now.
I mean, it's just several different things. If I were to get a call that night and something were to happen to where they would need something, and I would have to, instead of leaving from my home and coming here and getting the car, I would drive straight from my home to Raleigh, LeVallman's Police Supply, or to the golf store and buy them what they would need and so on. But we also have accounts at some of these places too, but it's just, it's two totally different things. I mean, whatever I would need to get, inexpensive, something, you know, small, then I would just put it on my card and turn it in. It's not something for any major purposes because I have accounts pretty much of all that, it's kind of like a.
Michelle, on that card, what, the transactions that are on that card, is it all from the police department when they need to use it?
No, it's other things that we made, like, well, if we had to buy a new computer last year, that was put on the card, so we don't have an account with Dell. But, I mean, or signing you guys up for classes like I did the other day, I had to put that on the card.
But if Sandra has a card.
In the same office.
In the same office, then we wouldn't be hindered by one of the cards being the chief.
Right. And I don't actually have a problem with that, I just need to make sure that all of the rules and regulations to files, including and most especially the pre-audit. That is a general statute, and that has to be done. I need to know, and I don't know, I know no one wants to call and ask me if it's okay they spend money, but they have to.
So.
So I have to pre-audit and make sure there's enough money in his budget, or his budget or his budget, to make sure that there's enough money for us to actually do.
So in the case of him buying a headlight at midnight.
Right.
He's still got to call you and ask you if he can make that expenditure?
I mean, making a headlight, I mean, doing something like that at midnight, that's not above a hundred dollars.
No, it's not above a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. The way I read it was above a five hundred, zero through five.
Hundred dollars, you have to have a purchase order.
I can't ever think of anything that would come close to five hundred unless it would be a car battery.
But you have to have a purchase order, anything over five hundred, and that's since the day I started, fourteen years old, it was.
I definitely see the benefit of passing it along to Chief. I wouldn't draw it up. You see, there's several hours after town hall closes that other stores and stuff are still open. Town hall closes at five. Advance Auto's open until nine, Walmart's open until midnight. So there's a nice sized window, and that's going to, from their shift changes, what time are your shift changes?
Six and six.
So the shift changes are when the issues are going to happen, that's going to be when stuff, businesses will still be open, but you're closed. Six and six? So they're closed both shift changes, which is when you need this card?
Yes.
And six and six is also when businesses are open?
Yes.
Okay. What do we do to, do we make a?
I like, I like getting the town manager's input. I mean, they're the one, you guys have to manage that, right?
Well, you, I've sent email traffic to you and to the mayor and all the council. I don't, I'm really leery of credit cards because of fiscal controls and also the audit requirements. And the most abuse I've ever seen is through credit card use.
Purchase cards.
And I would not recommend it, but that's your call, that's not my call. I don't know how Andrew feels about that.
It's not unusual for most small municipalities to have one centralized purchase card, and that person, basically, usually the person who is in charge of fiscal control hands it out on an as-needed basis. That's not unusual. I understand the chief's, you know, got some tough situations. Again, I echo what Mr. Mason said, that's your call.
Can we have some further discussion?
I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we table this. I agree with what Tony said about the actual, if there's going to be a change, well, I mean, we got this as highlighted on the current issue, but I would like for Andrew to be involved once he gets on board too, which we'll have time before the next meeting, and lay out some guidelines for what it would look like. So I make a motion to be tabled before the next meeting.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. All right. Motion passes, it's going to get tabled for our next meeting. Item F, next on the agenda, nomination and appointments of commissioners to the Fire Board, Downtown Development Board, Ex officio, and the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Government. There is one vacancy for each. Michelle, can you identify the commissioners currently serving?
Okay, so the Fire Board was Commissioner Tucker, of course, he's not here anymore. The DDB is Commissioner Combe, and the Upper Coastal Representative is Commissioner Lucas.
Who?
Commissioner Lucas.
Okay.
So as far as the DDB goes, when we started the Downtown Development Board, we discussed, you know, obviously, one of the board members, ex officio, because we can't sit on more than two boards, and we are already on the Board of Adjustment as well as Board of Commissioners. So it's a non-voting position, and so we're there basically at advisory capacity, and what we discussed was a three-year term, and to change that over and keep fresh faces from the board involved with the actual town subcommittees, or the town boards. And so that's why I've been on it for four, almost four years now. And, you know, COVID, we kind of let it ride through that extra year because we had to suspend meetings. But we are at a period in time with the Downtown Development Board where we're going to be looking for ways to develop the Downtown Depot Park, and I feel like, I do feel like Commissioner Wilkins has a good background in fundraising, where she can advise this board, actually, she can't do the fundraising herself, that is, once again, against the rules, but she can advise this board on how to do some fundraising, some sponsorship and things like that, because that's more of her spirit. I'm more of the organization and get it set up type guy. So I said it on the tee, I'm going to let her kick, but I would recommend, and I nominate I would recommend, and I nominate, uh, Commissioner Wilkins to take my spot on the Downtown Development Board Executive.
Motion. Second.
That was a motion, nomination motion.
Any discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Where she cares. Congratulations, Commissioner Wilkins, and we know that you will do great things here in downtown Spring Hope. Excited to see it. Uh, the next one is the Upper Coastal Plain, uh, Council of Government, currently Commissioner Lucas. Do we have any nominations for?
I think Ms. Lucas enjoys that.
You all right, Brendan, with it?
I'm all right.
You all right?
I'll make a motion that Ms. Lucas remain as a representative.
Second.
There's two of those, of the, of the, one is for transportation, you know about that too, right? Transportation. And I'm also.
It's the same thing, right?
Yeah, for that too. Uh, I would like to say that, um, uh, I don't know how he wants to do it, you know, because you could have been the representative, I'd be the alternate. Or I could remain the representative, you be the alternate.
That, that's up to you, Commissioner.
You'll be there anyway, right?
I will probably attend on a rate, fairly regular basis.
Okay, I, I think you can remain, I could be.
Tell him we have a motion for the second. Got a second, uh, any comments? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations on your continued volunteership of, of, uh. The next one is the Fire Board. And it was Commissioner Tucker, um, so we need a nomination to sit on the Fire Board. Is that seat still the magic seat that sits on the Fire Board?
I'm gonna say that's the magic seat. I'm gonna.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm gonna recommend and.
Do they have a vote?
No, it's not a voting, I mean.
I mean, do they have a vote that I come there?
No, no, no.
Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to walk in and see this. Oh, God.
They, they, they got you anyway.
The new guy.
They sent me.
Okay, I'm fine.
Second.
So I make a motion that Mr. Jeff please.
Second. All right, uh, any discussion? All favors say aye? All opposed? Congratulations. I know you will do well. All right, next item on the agenda, uh, is item G, Chamber of Commerce update, Mr. Ethan Vester.
Mayor, Commissioners, good to see everybody tonight. Uh, welcome to 2022. Happy New Year. Uh, this year is going to be, uh, a big, big year for the Chamber of Commerce here. Uh, we will be celebrating our 85th year as a chamber here in Spring Hope. Uh, along with that does come with the anniversary of our 50th Pumpkin Festival. So I know, uh, several of you will be helping us with that, the travel and tourism boards. Uh, we'll be integrating with, with them as well. Uh, but we're, we're anticipating October, but we have a lot of work to do through, uh, winter, spring and summer as well. Uh, our annual membership drive is kicking off here this week. Uh, the Chamber's board will be meeting tomorrow night. Uh, it was supposed to be tonight, but I know several of us wanted to be here to welcome our new town manager. Look forward to working with you. And you can greet him here tonight, so I want to push that off. Um, I have some good news. I wish I had a, a better, uh, announcement to make, but I have been in contact with the Tans Group, which operates Close Angels. Uh, and we are planning a grand opening for them. A date is not yet set. They're waiting on some, uh, some equipment to be installed. So, uh.
It's my employees.
No, no, the employees are being trained as we speak, uh, in neighboring Nashville. But, uh, don't, no Bowberries just yet. What happens is soon enough. We have a couple of new businesses here in town, uh, one that I'll mention to you, just took our residence on Main Street. Uh, Ms. Brandon Lynn Joe was supposed to be here tonight.
She is.
Oh, is she hiding in the back? Is she in the lobby?
Nope.
Nope.
Did she do it?
She was here. All right. But Ms. Brandon Lynn Joe is a licensed massage and bodywork therapist. Uh, she's been practicing in Raleigh and Wilson since 2016. She's a resident of Mo Meyer, uh, and she is now operating in what we all know as the Alford Building. So if you have, uh, some kinks in your necks and backs and need, uh, massage therapy and bodywork, she will greet you there by appointment.
Can Brendan and Chris?
We are scheduling one.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, she wanted to get, get settled, uh, before we do that for her. Uh, we also have a furniture store opening up in the former Lou Jean store. We'll also be welcoming them next month.
Pizza?
Yes, ma'am.
We have Wake Granite on High Street. Wake Granite.
Yes.
You, you?
I, I'm aware of it.
Okay.
We'll be welcoming them to, uh, there's several, uh, new businesses that are moving and shaking in town. And as they open, we'll try to bring those before the board. Any questions from the board?
No, I just think with it being the 50th Pumpkin Festival, maybe five years, you should have got really excited at the beginning of this meeting. This room was full of people interested in Spring Hope and wanting to volunteer to do stuff, so. I hope you wrote down names.
Mayor Pritchard is already going to give me a full manifest.
Excellent.
So, uh.
Lot of people.
I'll be knocking on their doors.
I don't know if the Chamber's ever had that many members. That'd be great.
I think we had just under 60 last year. Uh, our goal is to have 85 members at least this year.
Great.
See how close we can get to that.
Take advantage of all this excitement.
I would. Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, Town Attorney's Report?
Uh, nothing to report to the board this month.
All right, next.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Two buildings.
Uh, the agreement has been sent to, uh, Mr. White and his attorney. I haven't heard back from them.
How long have they had it?
Did he drop it off?
About a week, over a week.
He told me he was going to have it dropped off this week, I mean, last week.
I emailed, emailed it to his attorney, but I copied him, so I know he got it that way.
Any other questions for the attorneys? Next item on the agenda, EnviroLink's report. If you'll please come up and report to the board.
We, um, have a consumer confidence report that will be coming out shortly. Um, our compliance officer said she was, uh, going to start working on them, uh, this month. And the local water supply plan also, she will be working on this month. Also, I believe it's the second week of February, we're going to try to do some smoke testing. I was talking with Dave and we were looking at a calendar and that was been, I feel like to be a good time to get in to do that. Your wells, um, pumped, uh, 2.8 million gallons of water. And you sold around 2.8 million gallons of water. And the wastewater F1 meter was reading 1.6 million gallons of F1. Mr. Lamb suggested that we may get someone to look at the meter at the wastewater treatment plant and see about getting it calibrated again. It was calibrated in September, I believe, was what he told me, but something seems to be a little off there and I think we need to get it worked out. Any questions?
Yes, uh, screen on the.
Um, did Dave get back with you about that?
Mm-mm.
We'll be there this, this week.
Okay, all right. Um, and then I don't know if you've been fielding on this yet or not about the, um, filtration pilot study?
Yes.
Can you tell us about that?
The filters that we have now have been sent off to get the medium replaced in them. And hopefully we'll get them back within the month. And then because of doing it as pilot study, we'll still have to go and get it approved by a public water supplier. But, yeah, and hopefully we can get that in another season.
So that came up for, any of you aren't aware, that came up in a meeting that we have with, um, Mike Myers, President of EnviroLink. And right now there's not any filtration on the wells. Uh, of course it's treated, but there's not any filtration to keep the iron and the manganese out. And then the iron and the manganese is what's giving you the orange discoloration at times. It's what may be stained in your clothes. The manganese is going to be the small black particulates that you may see in your tub when you run a, a tub bath full of water. And so the filtration pilot study is going to work on removing those things from the water supply before it gets to your house. Uh, this is a program that's free of charge that EnviroLink is doing for us. They're going to see what's in our water, uh, and they're going to see what filtration we need to remove it. And then they can submit a proposal to the board, should the board, uh, want, wanted to see about adding filtration to the water supply system. Uh, the other thing that they're working on, and this is all going to be submitted to the board for the board's approval, uh, is auto flushing valves. And auto flushing valves, can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so basically it's a, a, a valve put on a fire hydrant, um, and it's set on a timer. You can set it to come on and usually during the night, so you're not, you know, stirring people during the day or anything. But, uh, and it automatically runs water through the fire, the flushing out lines, to put it to end the lines. You can control how much flow you get out of the hydrant, how long you want it to flush, um, you know, all those things are variable. And you can kind of play with it and set it up and see what you get best results of. Um, I know that Dave has started putting them together. I believe he got most of the parts.
Free of charge. And those are free of charge, should the board, uh, want to apply them, they're free of charge going. And so you guys may remember sometimes you see the hydrants being flushed and you see the orange water coming out. And so when you guys call in and complain and then they'll, they'll flush the hydrants and they'll flush the lines out. So inside the lines, when we get the iron manganese in there, sometimes it breaks off and, you know, create that, that issue that you guys call in and complain about. So they flush the hydrants, the water goes really, really fast through the pipes. And it scours the pipes and it breaks all, all that, uh, potential rust out of there and, and blows it out and cleans out the lines. And that happens usually in the middle of the day during business hours when EnviroLink is here. So these auto flushing valves, what they'll be able to do is actually get all of the water to go in a unidirectional way. Uh, so they'll be able to get the water to come all to those two fire hydrants from all directions and scour it, instead of water crisscrossing, going back and forth. Uh, they can time it to where they all come to those hydrants and it flushes and scours the lines. And in addition with the filtration system and the auto flushing valves, that'll keep the pipes clean. The filtration will keep the stuff from going into the pipes to begin with. And these are things that they're going free of charge.
Move around town to different areas to, you know, just be in one spot.
And it can be, it can be, like you said, it can be adjusted. If we're having a lot of complaints in this part of town, we can, you know, clean the pipes out here and then move it and come up with a cycle that works to hopefully, again, you know, I'm, I'm big on preventing problems, not being reactive, but proactive. So hopefully we can get a system in place where we can rotate them, uh, monthly and we have a pattern that we set up to keep it, uh, keep it clean, keep the pipes scoured. Any questions for EnviroLink? So we are holding y'all accountable.
We can make cap comments?
Absolutely.
This is the, the problem I have right here is we are letting EnviroLink make the decision on certain items and just EnviroLink. Um, I don't trust you guys. Period, end of story.
Fair.
I mean, I don't. Until you prove yourself to me, I don't trust you. And why we're putting everything, Kyle, nothing's for free. You can sit there and tell me it's for free. Nothing's for free. And to put this to them and give it to just one person to make a decision, what's the best filtration system for me? It's affecting their pocket. You can't sit here and tell me it's not. I think we need to look at it with different avenues and different people looking at it, that we have more than one, one opinion. Um, and I have a problem with this is because one of the issues I've heard over and over in the last months is, well, they can't get help. It's a hard time. It's a tough market. But all of a sudden now, we got people to do all this stuff. Where'd they come from? So I just, I have a problem with it. Our committee has a problem with giving these guys all this extra work to do and they can't even do what they're supposed to do on the contract that they have right now. I've said what I have to say.
Anything that they design, it has to go through a licensed engineer with the state.
It doesn't matter.
Nothing that they can do.
I'm just telling you.
Is done by themselves.
You're getting one opinion on what needs, that's the best thing for this town. One person's giving you the opinion. And that's it. And I don't trust them.
So what do you suggest?
I suggest we, we call other avenues. We call the, we call, uh, Mr., uh, Tom Houston or Mike Houston with the North Carolina Rural Water Authority. Get some company names. These guys will come in, they'll look at everything and they'll do the same thing these guys are going to do. They'll do the same thing. We'll have more than one opinion. We'll see what, maybe two of the opinions are the same. We may get what we need. But I think we're getting more of an open view of it, not necessarily, if you get the North Carolina Rural Water Authority to come and help us too, it's not, they're doing it just to help us.
Right.
They, they were here recently and Rural Water was, and they, they, they agreed that putting some filtration on.
Yeah, well, I, okay, I'm fine with that. But what is the best system? What, there's more than one. And so I just feel we need to look in other avenues and not just these guys because they're not going to, you guys, they're not going to change overnight. They weren't three months ago like they were. And just because now we had, you had a meet with Mr. Myers, he's a good salesman. That's what he is. He's a great salesman. But when it comes to provider, I've got a problem with that. He's not a provider. He's a salesman right now. And I've got a problem that they all of a sudden can do all this stuff. Now they're going to do this. They're working on this. And we can't even get them here to pick up limbs. I mean, come on. I mean, I'm just, I, I've got a problem. And our advisory board has a problem, so we're advising you that.
I think this is absolutely perfect. I think this is perfect. I think this is exactly, this is exactly the enthusiasm that you want to get out of these committees. And Senator Barnes herself, uh, actually said that this infrastructure committee is a must. Senator Barnes said that she feels it's essential and one of the best steps that the town, uh, has taken as far as spending the money wisely. That's straight from Senator Barnes. So I believe completely that this should be turned over to the committee. Um, I think this is a perfect example of how passionate Tony is. And I think that he's obviously going to have the best interest.
I think it's the boards too, the committee, we can come up with some names, but it's still going to be the board that's going to.
Oh, the board votes on it, yes.
Who we're going to, who, who we want to get to come look at stuff and what they come up and what they say.
That's what we turn.
I think we need to.
I promise you that.
Huh?
Nothing will be turned over directly for the committees to handle themselves.
No, yeah, that's right. That's right. And I understand that. We know that. And, but I want, I think we need to look at more than one avenue. One person tells us what to do and not to do. And with it, with it being.
And I agree 100% with that, just like the RFQ, that we're doing all the other stuff. You're exactly right. You're exactly right, Tony.
Yeah.
What's RFQ?
The question. Thank you.
Sorry. See, I'll probably call the.
Talking grass, not my story.
For delete limb and grass. So they are putting RFPs out for people to, to bid on that, which is one of EnviroLink's services. A lot of people have complained about some period grass maintenance. Uh, so there is a request for bids for that. And I'm so excited.
Well, and look, I'm not going, you guys just start doing what you're supposed to do, when you're supposed to do it, how you're supposed to do it, and do it safely. And I, I'm fine. Um, I have an opportunity out of my life to sit in town and do nothing but look, and that's what I did. And so I see, I mean, when you have a person go out in a truck with a trailer, stop on Nash Street. Nash Street, stop on Nash Street, pull off the side of the road about two feet, one person, and they're trying to get out of the truck to get around to the back to do something, throw in it, whether it's limbs or leaves. But you got one person on Nash Street trying to get out of a truck with a trailer. That is unsafe. I'm sorry. That's, that's just, that can't happen. Yes, okay, it's all right this time. Yes, it's all right. We got away with it. We get it. No. That's, you guys start working, uh, uh, right and not just arbitrarily doing stuff out here. But can you win me over? Yeah, I think you could, but I got to see it.
Well, I would recommend, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that we take a holistic approach with the infrastructure here in Spring Hope. Do some investigations. I know you've got some grant money. I believe you got a couple of AIAs. You know, we can go out to RFQ for engineers to help us steward that process. So I, I do think we, through the procurement process, we can get the professionals on board to help the town navigate these waters, pardon the pun, uh, and, and take a more holistic approach so that you're not band-aiding or, you know, trying this or trying that. And I think it may take a little bit more time, but in the end you'll have a better result. And we want to keep the utility funds self-sufficient, perhaps even work towards having town staff be able to, uh, manage these systems. So let's take a step back and do some of these things in, in, in a review process. Set an agenda with the board and navigate these waters together.
And you may, may not be aware that, uh, Matt Gay, which is who, uh, is associate, put together our maps, infrastructure maps. They also put together, recently they're putting together the capital improvement plan and there's the ones that the board hired. the capital improvement plan and there's the ones that the board hired to put together to write the request for those 3.7. So hopefully we can connect you with him sooner rather than later.
Well, that 3.7 will also require procurement. You're going to have to procure an engineer, you can't rely on Matt Gay to do that.
Right. So that's good. There's a lot of stuff going on.
A lot of good stuff, though.
With the infrastructure. And we're excited to see so many people working so hard on it. Any questions for EnviroLink?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next item on the agenda, Police Chief's report.
The month of December was not a very busy month before reports. We had three reported incidents as far as criminal or investigations that had to be conducted, 158 calls for service, 26 vehicle stops, 187 security checks, three traffic accidents, and 14 reported street lights out. And I was just informed of another one on my way in, so 15 total. I don't know how that could go up if the ones that we're reporting are getting fixed. I spoke with Lynn Hart before I came in and I know some of the ones are continuing to get reported multiple times. So I will get with Sandra tomorrow and find out, just to make sure before I call in, to get an explanation on why they haven't been fixed, that they have been called in. As far as the parking and kiosk for the sweepstakes, I had a question for you on one of those. I went by the other day for, I believe, all five of the reported spots and I spoke with the business owners that had those machines inside the buildings. And they, most of them were just like, absolutely, if you're involved, if it's going to be a police issue, we don't want any trouble, we'll get it out of here. One question that I had with two of those is the stop and shop. It is not an actual machine that you sit down at and play. It is a, basically an internet hub to where a person will walk into that establishment, swipe their card, not credit card, debit card, but swipe their gaming card for that system. It recognizes them and it automatically activates a hotspot. What that hotspot does is then gives them an IP address or basically an access code to get on the internet to game on their personal device. So if I'm in there, I've swiped this card, it's just like what you said a minute ago, Commissioner Cohen, it's just one more avenue. It's going to continue to change and change and change. But if they're, the way ours is written, and I read it several times just to see if I could read into it, they're not actually playing that game in that establishment, they are on their personal device.
But it doesn't say what device it's on, it just says, upon the assertion of payment permits a person to play.
There is no payment.
Sir, there is, but I can go show you most any way you want to go.
No, no, I understand, yeah, we're talking about two total everything.
No, you're talking about the gaming machine.
No, no money goes into, there is no money going into that.
But it's a pre-purchased card.
It is a pre-purchased card. And I would assume they go online and purchase it for the business for, I can't remember the brand for that one machine, but that's the card that you use. So you swipe that card, you have money on that card, that's your account. You swipe that card, no money ever goes in that, that store clerk never pays a dime out. If you win anything on that machine, it automatically uploads to your account wirelessly through your mobile device. So that is the, those two machines are the main question. I know the other ones have to go. But since they're not actively playing that machine and no money went into that machine, the store clerk is not involved in any way other than having it plugged into his power outlet.
The ordinance doesn't say they have to play on that machine, it just says, once you pay, you're allowed to play a game.
Yeah, but they don't.
And they can't, they have to be near that machine in order to play, they can't walk, they can't activate and leave and go somewhere else.
Correct. They can sit in the parking lot, I think as long as they're close to that hub.
Right. So that would fall within the ordinance, yes.
The paid play, even though it's prepaid.
Yeah.
Why don't they just sit at their house on their own, like, play?
I think before, I've spoken with A.L. Lee about it and this, those are...
Did they say it's not according to our ordinance?
Well, it's very, very iffy, I mean, you can read into it anyways.
Does A.L. Lee say that that doesn't fit in our ordinance?
It depends on how you look at it and how you read it. As far as actual money.
It fits within our ordinance and if they don't agree, ask them to call me.
Okay, but no, right, I understand, but that clerk is not involved in that machine in any way.
It still fits within the ordinance.
Because it's in general and central business and they're paying the play, whether it's prepaid or not.
Okay. So what would you guys like for me to do, L.A., what would you like for me?
Force the ordinance on those two machines.
Okay. Well, I mean, all machines, including those two?
Correct.
Of course, I would go on machines and find out with Mark about that one.
Well, I mean, he was the one that was, just said, let me know and they'll go, but I don't want to violate his stuff as well. Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda, Town Hall Report, Mr. Manager.
You have a copy of my report for December in your agenda packet. I'll just highlight a couple of things. One is, the planning board did approve the Bryson preliminary plat for the Bryson Ridge subdivision with conditions at their December meeting. Construction activities cannot proceed until those conditions have been resolved by the property owner. Also, the planning board discussed the need to review and update the town's zoning and subdivision ordinances. And they also discussed the need to activate the technical review committee, which is referenced in the subdivision ordinance. These should be work items for your, this coming calendar year and want to make sure that's passed along to the new town manager. The second thing I will mention is that Michelle has sent out a request for qualifications for regarding the EnviroLink, the things that are being done by EnviroLink now, mowing downtown properties and also bi-weekly leaf and limb pickup. The response for that is due in by 2:00 PM, January 28. We've also received annexation petitions for the Bryson Ridge subdivision. This is something that's being held over for Mr. Dianio.
You're saving all the good stuff for me to edit out?
I will not go into the John Clark enforcement issue, I assume that you'll cover that in your report. The mayor and town board, of course, interviewed four very highly qualified candidates for the town manager's job. And I think they made the right choice and I congratulate Andrew on that position. One thing I will mention to you tonight that I didn't include in my report is that we do have a pending application with the United States Department of Agriculture, AIA grant that we've done some preliminary work on and I think the board has been involved in that, am I correct in that?
Yeah, they gave me permission a few months ago to start an application.
We've talked to, I think Mike Tolson has been working with the town in that regard.
He's been consulting just a little bit and helping with that.
But we're at the point now that we do need a detailed, a preliminary engineering report to determine the cost for replacement of water and sewer lines in the downtown area. This is a combination grant and loan program through USDA. So I would ask tonight that you give staff permission to proceed with that preliminary engineering report and it would, we would use Mike Tolson to do that. And the cost that he has quoted to us, it would be up to $5,000. We cannot proceed until we get a preliminary engineering report in that regard.
Some of those we have to get like different ones.
Well, if you look at your procurement policy, if it's up to $5,000, I can go ahead and give him the contract.
So you don't have to get multiple?
Right, so I don't have to. If it's over $5,000, I can still get multiple and still procure I want, according to procurement. And I talked to Jonathan with the USDA today, he said that I couldn't move any farther until I got the, got the report.
I'll make a motion that we allow the town clerk to proceed.
Second.
Any discussion, all of you? Any opposed? Questions here?
The last item I have for you is that Mr. Dianio will start his job on the 24th.
Yes, sir.
And my last day will be next Thursday. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with you folks. I'll be here Wednesday to meet with Andrew and I'll be here next Thursday and then I will go into my third retirement phase.
Well, we thank you for spending your time helping us in our transition.
It has been fun.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, code enforcement.
During the month of December, we opened eight new cases in code enforcement and we successfully abated eight cases, including two of those that were opened during the same month. And we addressed things like minimum housing, junk piles, junk and nuisance vehicles, and overgrown lot nuisances. In reference to the property located at 202 Hopkins Avenue for multiple untagged vehicles and open storage, several notices have gone out. I've spoken with the resident many times and so during the month of December, a civil penalty notice was prepared and sent in first class, certified and posted on the property. So the civil penalty notice is a $50 per day fee as long as the violation continues. So when I went by there the following week, all of the vehicles have been moved with the exception of one pickup truck. The pickup truck remains in the yard and it does have wheels and things in the back of it, which I specifically mentioned to the resident that it needs to be removed, but it has not been. Many of the tools that were laying and scattered on the ground have been removed, but there are still some tools that need to be removed as well. I wasn't able to get by there today. I went by there, but they were trimming trees and they had that portion of the road closed, so I wasn't able to stop by there and see her. So next week I will try to check with her. I've been calling and calling, leaving messages, but no one returns my call. So hopefully, the next time I speak with her, hopefully we can come to a resolution to be able to abate this case once and for all. But I'm still working on that. During the month of December, 801 East Nash Street was a dilapidated commercial building. It was a building that was in front of a storage unit and it was sold, so it has a new owner. I've been in contact with him, he had that building demolished during the month of December. That's all been cleared, so you would never know it's even there, it was even there. Year to day, or total to day, not year to date, since we just started a new year, but case status to date, we have opened a total of 128 cases. We have abated successfully 107 of those cases. We currently have 21 cases open that we're working on. And of those cases, one of those cases that we wanted to discuss tonight was for 205 West Main Street. An appeals hearing was conducted on December the 6th and an appeals hearing was held on 12/6/21 and the town's Spring Hope Commissioners heard the facts of the case and voted to uphold the finding of fact order. And as of 12/10/2021, the finding of fact order commenced as stated. It gave Mr. John Clark 30 days to make some changes and to do some renovation or demolition on the structure. So during the month of December, after December 6th, I stayed in contact with Mr. Clark and on 12/10/21, I updated the finding of fact order, sent that out to him in email, first class mail and certified mail. And then on 12/15, I requested a copy of the structural report that he had told me that he had gotten previously, months before, but I had never seen it. So he did send me a copy of that, I was able to review that. And then on 12/22, I sent him another email asking for the contractor's name. He told me he had a contractor. I asked for the contractor's name and the contact information so that I could confirm his start date. On 12/30, I sent another request for contractor name and information on how to contact the contractor. And so I received an email back from John. And he said, if I could get a contractor to sign a contract to do the work, I would be more than happy to forward the information to you. I'm still working on it. Okay, that was on 12/30. And then on 1/4, I sent another email and as the finding of fact 30-day timeframe quickly approaches the end of the 30 days, I wanted to check back with you for any updates referencing the property at 205 West Main Street since the December 6, 2021 appeals hearing. Please advise of any updates or actions that you have taken since December 6, 2021. Also, please confirm your mailing address. So he sent back to me on 1/6, I have finalized the paperwork with the contractor and he is to deliver the signed copies to me in the morning. If he cannot mobilize by the weekend, I will be out there with some help this weekend to begin the removal of the roof structure on the collapsed section. So I went by there this morning, this afternoon, and I looked at it as thoroughly as I could from the exterior and I could not tell that anything had been done since December 6th other than the building is collapsing more toward the partner building, the building next door. So on my way over here this evening, I received a call and that call was from John and he wasn't going to be able to make the meeting, but he called and told me that over the weekend, he and some help removed two truckloads of debris and took 25 feet of the ceiling off. And they started at the back door and worked from the inside. He did tell me that the first contractor who had said he would do it after the 30-day timeframe, said he could not do it because he could not meet that 30-day timeframe. So then he told me that he had a new contractor, but I never received his name or information. So today, he's back to the first contractor and said he's back on board and his name is Alex Sharon, but he does not want to begin work until March. And if he begins the work in March, he says he can have it demo demolished in two weeks. And he said next weekend, he has a backhoe and a couple of guys to help him. So that is the information that I have. I tried all month to get information about what was happening, who was the contractor, but I didn't get any of that information until tonight at 5:30. So, that is that.
I would say, I'm gonna reiterate what I said in the last one, I believe word out was mail, we gave him every opportunity, and once we were able to react through the code enforcement, we were obviously bound by other things previously, but it's, it's time.
So do whatever the next step is, he, as far as I'm concerned, he didn't need any of the, any of the specifications in the last thirty days, I didn't even talk right around, move on to the next process.
So what is the next, what is the next process?
The next process is, we will work on a ordinance, and we will present that to our attorney, Mark Edwards, once we have that finished, uh, we'll do that this week, so we should be able to get that to you by Friday. Uh, and that will be a ordinance, and that, um, that ordinance, he will go over that, once he approves that ordinance, then, um, it will be sent out to you all for your approval, um, and then you can go from there.
If they don't want to say where you need it. I would recommend, Mark, that once that comes in, that you make us aware, and we'll have a special call meeting, we ain't waiting up everywhere.
Right, absolutely.
Yes, I just, uh, only, I don't, I just need to make sure we don't have to get him noticed for that, I don't think we do, but it's any double check, we gotta get him noticed.
So what is this ordinance, what's the summary of it?
Well, the ordinance actually gives, that, once it's approved, if the ordinance is approved, it gives the town the power to do with the building whatever they want to do. If they want to, uh, demolish it, they can demolish it, if they want to renovate it, they can renovate it, and then that bill will be to the owner of that property, that bill will be sent to them, it'll be their responsibility.
But the town has to pick up the cost.
Correct, right.
The cost, the cost of the demolition or the renovation.
And typically, a lot of times, um, if people do not have the funds to pay, then a lien is put on the property.
Where does the money come from?
Your budget.
Right, which is, right, which is what the board's been concerned about the whole time, yes.
Right.
Does the board need to start getting quotes, R Qs?
Well, given that we have a new town manager coming on board, this will be, uh...
Do I have to add this to the list?
Item thirty-two in the inbox.
Welcome to town.
Because it's gonna have a ma, it's gonna have a major impact on the budget, and so there's no budgeted, there, there are no budgeted funds for this.
Right.
And so, um, uh, uh, that's where we are, there are no budgeted funds, and so you need a new town manager on board to help look at the town finances, to figure out where the money's gonna come from, um, and so, you know, that's where you're at.
So you will have that ordinance tracked and sent to the park?
Yes, yes.
And one more thing, just, and then after all that's done, you'll have an assessment on the property, a lien on the property, um, typically liens like that get paid when the property is sold, if ever, so, um, like in most cases, obviously the person wouldn't have, I mean, if the person was gonna make the repair, he'd be making it, so he's not gonna voluntarily pay the bill after the assessment is made, as it says, um, theoretically he could pay it, but he's not gonna pay it, um, so if, when the property is sold, then the new buyer will have to pay the assessment before the deed is recorded, um, so the town, because if anybody is gonna record a deed, they have to call the town, the town has to let them know whether or not taxes are cleared, if there are taxes on the property, they can't record the deed, so, that's kinda how it, that's where the rubber meets the road as far as the town getting paid. Theoretically, the town could foreclose on the property, but, um, you get what you, you get what you get at the foreclosure sale, and so if there's a twenty thousand dollar assessment against the property and you sell on the courthouse steps for a thousand, that's all you get, so, um, those, those might be extreme numbers, I'm just, uh, those, you would wanna think hard about that.
So the only other option is foreclosure?
Yes, but foreclosure is very risky.
You can't write ordinances required that you pay back?
I mean, when you fore, when you sell it on the courthouse steps, the highest bidder gets it at the highest price.
Yes, but what I was saying is, I understand foreclosure, but can you not write into ordinances where the property owner would repay the lien and give them terms?
Well, it would come from the, they would be paying it by virtue of the sale price.
Without them having to sell it, sell it, 'cause if, if he just doesn't sell the property, then he gets a free repair, if he just sits on it, like...
No, it's not free because there's an assessment, so if the town spends ten thousand dollars, if he sells it for eleven thousand dollars, we get the first ten thousand and he gets the thousand, so we would be paid first.
Right, I understand that, but if he doesn't sell the property?
Correct.
Then he just gets a free repair?
Correct.
And he can just keep it as long as he wants to, unless we foreclose on it?
Correct.
So is there not a way to write an ordinance, if we write an ordinance where we require him to pay it back without sale?
That, that's what this is, I mean...
No, no, the lien, like, we say, okay, so this is the ordinance where we can put the lien on the property and do what we need to fix it, right? But then, you're saying that the only way we recover our money is either through, uh, foreclosure, right, or he sells it and the new purchaser, can, is there not a third option where we can write an additional ordinance that would require him to pay the lien back to us over a certain amount of time to prevent foreclosure?
You would have to go to Superior Court to try to enforce, enforce it, but you would end up right back where you began, because unless, unless you find an asset he has in Nash County that that judgment can be enforced against, um, going to Superior Court to enforce a judgment won't get you anywhere, I mean, you can't get blood out of a turn, I mean, if we can't, there's, you know, um, you, the attorney fees involved would start to become outweighing any benefit he would give.
Right.
You'd be risking, I mean, you'd be risking attorney fees with no benefit, too, I mean...
So he gets a free repair, unless you all foreclose?
That's, that's what the board's been facing this whole time.
Don't forget, you've had a vacate order on, on property owners.
So...
For over twelve months now.
So how, how is, uh, what are the stipulations for that to be lifted? Does all of the...
It's always been, it's always been that when the adjacent property owners have an engineer that signs off saying their buildings are safe, um, they can go win the buildings, that's been the condition, and unfortunately for them, this, the Main Street building is causing their buildings to be in an unsafe position, so presumably when you remove the, Mr. Clark's building, if it is demolished, they would be able to go back in their buildings because they meet the condition, which has always been, since day one, as soon as you get an engineer to say it's safe to go back, they can go back.
If, if, I'm just asking, right now, you're saying it keeps falling and it's dangerous?
Yes.
If, if a contractor's coming and get that wall down, get the roof in a pile, get it all down, would that be then considered safe, even though the material's not taken off the site? If it's not still in the wall falling, it's down in a pile?
Well, it wouldn't be considered abated, um, and if any, anyone had access to it, uh, it could be dangerous.
Well...
But as far as the wall falling on the other building, then, you know, you would eliminate that, but right now, it just keeps leaning and it have a picture...
I know that, I understand, that's what I'm saying, the contractor's gonna, the contractor's gonna come in, he's gonna take that wall and push it right into the center.
Yeah.
He's gonna take the roof and bring it right down into a pile, and my question is, if that roof's in, the roof's down, that wall's pushed into a pile, could that be abated so that Faith Christian could go back in their building then?
Could not be abated.
Well, could Faith Christian go back in their building?
Well, I, I wouldn't be the one to answer that, that would have to be a structural engineer.
Well, it's in a pile, so I...
So is it the county or the town that has placed the vacate order?
The town, from day, I mean, the, the morning after it happened, the town did.
So the vacate order is placed by the town, and the town is who can lift it?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so what he, he's talking about, when I looked at some of the emails that went back and forth, is cleaning up everything that's failed, and then shoring up the pieces of walls that are still there, so then you're saying that an engineer has to sign off that what's there is not gonna fall, and then the town can lift the vacate order? So that's the exact process that needs to happen?
Yes, and that's, it was, it was over a year ago, 'cause we were in this room on December twenty-fourth, and there was an agreement between the, between Mr. Clark and Faith Christian Ministries and the visits, that that would happen, and unfortunately, it did, hasn't happened, yes, and that, yes, but, but, but that's right, that's what, that was, uh, within a month of the thing happening, that was what was supposed to happen, was that, that wall leaning was supposed to, but Mr. Clark, as now, has never followed through.
I think there's something, I'm trying to make up my wrong, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but it does allow us to seize versus foreclose. To seize the property itself versus being the mercy of the, settling on the steps and four downs. I believe it's in there, I'm not heavily in a front office, I have to get back, you can confirm, but I think there is a way further down in the ordinance than we said.
Right, yes.
To seize, and to collect some property at the town, that we can say, without having to be at the risk of, how it's better getting to...
And I think that had been our intention when we started this process, is, is that if we didn't do anything and we got this far, that that's what we would do, was we would be seizing the property, so we would clean it up as best we could, it might still be a money loss deal, but we wouldn't be cleaning up his piece of property.
And I'll tell you who has already explained that process to me, yes, that is the next head, Jason Hume, I've already researched with him, we've figured out his answer.
See, I think Mark's got that information, I think just, we, he doesn't have a legal device, but I think we've talked about that before. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pull it, I'm sorry.
Well, the assessment, the assessment that's on the property will be drawing interest, I mean, it's, it's a...
But we have to...
Uh, let me check on that, I'm not sure. Yeah.
So you're gonna give him the ordinance by Friday, and then you're gonna do the checking that you need to do, and then we'll determine how we need to proceed.
Yeah, I'll, uh, you'll be, you'll be here this week.
I'll be here Wednesday.
Yeah, and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with a special call meeting to do it, but only just caveat it such that we'll make sure that we don't have to give him some type of notice before we hold the meeting, and if we, that may, uh, affect what we do, but otherwise, we can have a special meeting.
Okay, um, just a couple of other things, um, on the, uh, electronic gaming, um, providers, notices of violation were sent to all five of those, so they are aware of that, they are aware that they need to be removed immediately, and that was sent out on January fourth. If, if it, it isn't removed soon, I know, uh, Chief Police is going to make sure that's done, uh, but our next avenue would be to, um, schedule a hearing if, if it's not gone, um, in a, by next week. And then, one other thing I wanted to give you a heads up about, we have received a complaint of some goats, um, in Cattle Linnis, so I went by there and spoke with the resident today, and so she is not interested in removing her goats from Cattle Linnis in the residential area, she, um, it wants to file an appeal, so I told her she would need to contact you within ten days of receiving the notice of violation, so she will plan to do that, her name is Brandy.
What's the actual complaint, are they being liable, or what?
It's assuming violation, they're not allowed in Cattle Linnis, and she's aware of it. Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry?
Is it causing a nuisance, somebody?
It's assuming violation, uh, you can't have cows and horses and pigs and chickens and, it falls into that category.
All right, only one more item on the agenda, other business.
Well, I'll interrupt, just to say, I did get an email from Mr. White just now after I emailed him, and he said he'll have the agreement to the town office tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. White, so, yeah, so, uh...
Very good.
All right.
Sorry.
If there is no other business, then we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, that's right, that's right, uh, open conversation, I'll start with Mr. Jethris.
I'm good.
What? Hold on, hold on. No, that's, that's been postponed.
She knew it was in there.
Yeah, it was postponed.
I got, no, I'm good.
Mr. Lucas? No, sir.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Make a motion to adjourn. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye, all opposed? Meeting has adjourned, thank you all, that was...